We are a little past seven o'clock, so I'm going to call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Jolene, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Erickson is absent tonight. Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
Councilmember Valento?
Here.
Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Mayor Bain?
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Counsel, we have an agenda before you this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and our agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested party's opportunity to address counsel on any topic of your choosing. And is there anybody signed up for open forum this evening? There is not? Nobody signed up? Is there anybody in the room tonight that would like to speak in open forum? All right. Not seeing anybody come forward. Is there anybody online, Jolene?
There's no observers online this evening, Mayor.
Okay. With that, we will close open forum and bring agenda back to counsel. Counsel, for your consideration tonight is the consent agenda. We have tonight consent agenda items 6A through 6M. I will entertain a motion or any changes.
I will make a motion to approve consent agenda A through M.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. And all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and our consent agenda is approved. Okay. Our next item this evening on our regular agenda is item 7A, consideration of Mindot State Fiscal Year 2025 Airport Grants. And I believe Silas, you are kicking us off on this tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Bain and members of counsel for the opportunity to discuss with you the state funding grant offers that Mindot Aeronautics has offered the city of Forest Lake for improvement projects at the Forest Lake Airport. The state of Minnesota for state fiscal year 2025 has offered grant funding to the city of Forest Lake for three projects at the airport. The three projects include a 300-foot extension to runway 1331 design, an associated grant for a 300-foot extension to the parallel taxiway to runway 1331 that coincides with the runway extension, and then the third grant offer that the state offered was for completion of a clear zone acquisition plan. So I'll go ahead and detail all three of the projects here for counsel. What Mindot is looking for is acceptance of the funding by August 31st that the city of Forest Lake intends to pursue each project. So feel welcome to stop me as I discuss any of the projects here to ask any questions that you have. So I'll start with the 300-foot extension to runway 1331. So in 2021, the city of Forest Lake and the airport completed a master plan update. As part of that master plan update, an analysis of the length of the runway was completed. The current length is 2,700 feet by 75 feet wide. And what the master plan did is in accordance with FAA runway length advisory circular standards, you know, identified what the recommended runway length for the airport should be based on the current aircraft that are operating at the airport. So what that study concluded is that the recommended length for the runway is 3,000 feet. So where aircraft require the most length of runway is during takeoff conditions. And with the current length at 2,700 feet, certain aircraft are making load concessions so that they can get up in the air safely with the length of runway that exists. Or during certain periods of severe weather, they are not able to operate safely at the airport. So by completing a 300-foot extension of the runway, what that project will do was increase the operational safety for pilots that are operating at the airport. So for this particular project, what Mindot has put forth is in state fiscal 2025, so the state fiscal year runs July 1st through June 30th, they recommended that the city complete design and bid administration. And then in state fiscal 2026, Mindot will provide grant funding for construction. So they set this up this way to kind of break up the dollars amount that the city is requesting, knowing that the state funds are limited for projects moving forward. So for state fiscal 2025, for design only, the estimated total project cost is 175,000, and the state share would be 95%, and the city's share would be 5%. And then the construction cost estimate for state fiscal '26 is 900,000, which again would be a 95% state, 5% local cost participation. So for state fiscal '25, the estimated local share is 8,750 for design and bid administration. And then in '26, the estimated local share for construction would be 45,000. So I'll pause there if anyone has questions or comments about the proposed project.
Is there any harm if something were to happen, either us city looking at airport fund, airport fund balance, us just deciding sequencing of projects? If we were to in 2025 do the first portion but then not be committed to pulling the trigger in 2026, is there any harm in us unbundling or creating some distance between those? Or would that be in bad form and we really need to think of these as two sequential projects?
So if the city moves forward with design and then tells Mindot that we'd like to postpone construction, the design is still valid until the city says, okay, now we're ready, you know, to cover the local share to move forward with construction. So there aren't any penalties for not pursuing a construction grant in 2026 if that's the direction from the city.
Is part of that design also bid administration? Conceivably, if you're holding off timeframe, you're not going to execute on that part of it, right?
Correct.
Is that a large portion of the project or is it?
It's not a large portion. It's bid advertising, which is covered locally, which isn't a huge cost. And then it's bolt in and bank to answer any questions from contractors during the bidding process. And then a bid opening, which the costs for a bid administration are very small compared to the total cost of the project.
Okay. And I'm not sure if I feel strongly about that. I'm just trying to understand what our options are in sequencing that. So thank you.
And before we went out to bid, I think there would be consensus about whether or not the city would entertain a construction grant in 2026. And if there's a different direction, we would likely not bid the project because why incur those costs if you know you're not going to follow up with a construction grant? And just hold the plans and specs on the shelf until the city would be ready to move forward.
Understood. Counsel, I jumped in with questions on this one. Any other questions related to this component of the project? Thoughts? Go ahead.
And then, so the second grant, like I mentioned, is the associated 300-foot extension of taxiway aid to become a full parallel to the extended runway. So very similar to the 300-foot runway extension, Mindot has provided grant funding for design and bid administration for that project and then would follow up in 2026 with a construction grant. So the funding participation for the taxiway extension is the same, 95.5. So the estimated cost for design for the taxiway extension is 75,000, and then the estimated construction cost being 500,000. So the estimated local share for state fiscal '25 for the design and bid administration would be 37.50, and then for construction would be 25,000 in state fiscal '26. Any questions or?
Was that last number? Sorry. Our portion of the actual.
25,000. My apologies, councilmember. Any questions on the state grant offer for the taxiway extension design? All right. And then the last project that Mindot provided a grant for is for completion of a clear zone acquisition plan. So Mindot has a policy that they, you know, highly recommend that airport sponsors own and fee all the land under the clear zone. So there's a graphic in the packet there that kind of depicts what the clear zone is. So what that is, it's a trapezoidal shape, you know, that's off the end of each runway that serves the purpose of the protection of people and property so that there's not, you know, congregation of people, there's not a home, there's not, you know, large groups of people gathering in the event there's an aborted takeoff or an incident with a landing. So the Mindot policy, you know, states that any airport that does not own and fee all the land under the clear zone, you know, is subject to then not receiving as much state funding as they could. So in 2022, Mindot came out with the funding prioritization, which is also included in your packet, that scores each project. So currently, the way it sits with Forest Lake is that on the runway 31, you know, the south end, the city owns all the land under the clear zone for the existing 2,700-foot length and then even a 300-foot extension. But on the north end, Fenway Avenue cuts through a portion of the Mindot clear zone. So Mindot also understands that it's not feasible for each airport sponsor to own all the land under the clear zone for infrastructure reasons, cost reasons, a multitude of reasons. So for those airports, Mindot allows them to submit a clear zone acquisition plan, which will request an exemption to their policy. So if the city of Forest Lake moves forward with this project, it'll request an exemption from Mindot to then allow the airport to have better opportunity to receive funding moving forward. So that's kind of the proposed project with completion of a clear zone acquisition plan. It again would follow a 95% state, 5% local share, and the estimated project cost for completing that plan is 10,000 with the local share being 500. Are there any questions on the clear zone acquisition plan?
That's just that area on the south end or the southeast end, right? That's the extension of the runway.
Correct. So on the south end, as you can see in the graphic, Forest Lake already owns the land underneath the existing and the proposed clear zone. It's on the north end where you can see, you know, that outer portion where Fenway Avenue runs through. And that's the area that Forest Lake would be requesting exemption to Mindot for their policy for stating there's a public road that cuts through there. And from the conversations we've had from Mindot, they just need to see an exemption request come through. And then that'll allow Forest Lake projects to score higher moving forward with the completion and approval of this plan.
I want to make sure, so I want to make sure I understand. There's two components to this part. The first part is building, establishing the clear zone to the north because today there's nothing, right?
So it already exists.
Yeah.
And Mindot is already aware that it doesn't meet their policy of the city owning all the land under it. All Forest Lake is doing is just requesting an exemption to their policy. Because let me switch the screen here to the next page.
That little section right there.
Why it matters is for.
The section to the north exists right now?
It all exists except for they don't actually own this little piece right here.
Yeah, it's the 2.3 acres. But why it matters is, if you guys go to the last page in my packet, there's the Mindot Aeronautics State Funding Prioritization. So what Mindot does is they score every project that's submitted on the CIP. And if it achieves a certain score, it receives funding. And if it doesn't, it doesn't get funding. So what the, Forest Lake right now is losing 15 points because, you know, they don't own all the clear zone and fee, and they don't have this clear zone acquisition plan on file. So by completing this project, every Forest Lake project moving forward is going to score 15 points higher. And why that matters is projects, the further you get out from the runway center line, score less points on the prioritization model here. But by gaining those 15 points, it's going to better allow Forest Lake to compete for these other projects, you know, as you move forward with development at the airport. So what Mindot, oh, go ahead, councilmember.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, so what Mindot is looking for is just a response from the city by the end of the month that they're going to move forward with all three projects, a combination of the three, so that they know to secure the funding for Forest Lake. And then the next steps is bolt in and bank will bring back to counsel proposals for each project and will work with the city on getting grant funds for each.
So you're looking for a motion for the design work is what you're looking for, right, Silas?
A motion that the city is going to move forward and accept the grant offers from Mindot so that they secure the funding.
For tonight's purposes, but just for the planning portion of it or planning and construction?
Just for the runway and taxiway design only and then for the acquisition plan. Construction will be another discussion when state fiscal '26 starts.
Just a question on that clear zone. If you can go back to that map real quickly. On the other side of Fenway, so I guess that'd be the west side of Fenway, that is private property, is it not? And does that limit anyone to build any structures on that piece of property?
Correct.
And we've talked to that property owner, they're okay, they realize they are not able to even at this point to build anything on that land?
I'm not aware if the property owner has been informed of anything that they can't build on there. It may be within the zoning ordinance for the city. So I'd have to double check that, councilmember Roberts, to see. So zoning is a different animal than clear zone where there's a Zone A and a Zone B. If that, if portion of that property is in Zone A, then they correct, you are correct, they would not be able to construct a facility. If they're in Zone B, then they are able to construct.
Yes. Now, so it has to stay completely clear or is there just a high restriction there, you know?
For the zoning or for?
Yeah, for that little section that we don't own and that safety zone there.
Yeah. Zoning is more restrictive than the clear zone. So I would have to check what the zoning ordinance states, are there any restrictions over that parcel?
So we, I mean, we kind of got ourselves in a jam 15 years ago and it cost us a million dollars because we did almost the same thing. And then that property was not able to be built on and we were in a lawsuit, if I remember correctly. So I guess I would, for approving this or signing off, I want to make sure that we've had that conversation and they know they can't build and whatever is required.
Years ago, I know there was some conversation with the owner there because they allowed us to cut some trees down in that area there. That's all part of the horseshoe factory there, I believe. So I know there's been, way back when, there has been some conversation with them about just knocking a couple of trees down because they were up into that zone. It wasn't, it wasn't an issue at that time.
Knocking a couple of trees down and then saying you can't build on your land are two different things. So I think some clarity on that would.
Silas, I believe there's two zones off the end of the runways that exist today, right?
Correct.
Those are called A and B?
Correct. So Zone A.
Can you explain what A and B mean today so they understand that?
Sure. So off each ends of the runway, there's a zoning ordinance that already exists for the city of Forest Lake. And it's, the airport is zoned for a 3,300-foot runway length, even though they're only 2,700 feet. To kind of allude to councilmember Roberts, it's so that the land around the airport is protected so that, you know, if the city did decide to extend the runway even further, that there isn't any development in place that would restrict that. So Zone A is 2/3 of the length of the future runway. And Zone A is the most restrictive where even if anyone has property off airport property, they can't build any sort of homestead structure, building that's going to congregate people. And then Zone B is 1/3 the length of the runway where those types of facilities are allowed so long as the density of people populating there is less than 15 times the parcel acreage. So we'd have, I would have to check where this current property falls under Zone A to determine if there are any current restrictions already in place based upon zoning.
Mayor Bain, members of the council, if I might add, there are already restrictions in place with the zoning code and the airport overlay district that have been in place for quite some time. I think what's depicted in the blue box is something that already exists that, it's just the land isn't owned by the city. And so the city's acquisition of that land just makes it more manageable for the airport in the long run. But the acquisition doesn't create or place on it any additional restrictions than the zoning code already does today.
I misunderstood the nature of this project. So when I read, so when I read through the packet and understood that Fenway bisects that clear zone, my assumption, and I think now wrong, but I want to confirm I'm wrong, is that the property on the other side, that we were applying for an exemption so that the property, so not just Fenway, but the property on the other side of Fenway was going to be exempted from that clear zone. But it sounds like instead the project is to acquire that? Is that the case?
No. The project is not to acquire any land. It's just to request an exemption from the Mindot policy about owning all the land under the clear zone. So the clear zone and the zoning ordinance are two separate entities. The zoning already exists that has restrictions on the parcel. The clear zone is just an exemption from the city actually acquiring all that acreage.
So property owner restrictions or impact of us making this decision on adjacent property owners is the same whether we do this or not? They exist today? Is that, am I hearing that right?
That is correct.
And so what we are, I read this more as this was an administrative, us applying for an exemption with Mindot that allowed our projects to score higher. I saw this more as an administrative function than a zoning action?
Yes, I would characterize it the same.
Okay. Without any impact to adjoining property owners or current property owners, is that also?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Does that clarify or provide some?
So regardless of what's Zone A or B, you're kind of wondering whether you should need to look into that? Is it clear, is this, we know what that is and how that impacts it? Because if it's, if it's B, that gives them a little bit more options to do things as opposed to A. I just, I don't, I don't want any surprises. I don't want to, all of a sudden, they come to us and say that we want to put up a structure and we can't because of what we're doing here tonight. But if that's already in place, then, and they're aware of that, then I'm more comfortable with it.
Mayor Bain, if I might add, I apologize if I said the city's acquisition. That was my error. I can show you the Zone A, separate from what Silas is showing you, that does show over half of the subject property being located already in Zone A. So that wouldn't change with this at all. Those restrictions have been in place. I'd have to look to see when we last adopted that or when we adopted that ordinance, but that's been well in place, wouldn't change, this wouldn't change those provisions at all.
I think the.
Would you like to see the map?
No. If that's the case, I'll.
Think a little of the slippery slope that's challenging in your question as you say, you made the statement, you want to make sure that the property owner knows. It's always challenging to know if property owners know what's enacted, right? So they may or may not, but this isn't going to change anything to what they may or may not know is already in place. Thanks for walking us through that. So the request tonight is you're looking for council's approval for the 2025 components of the projects?
Correct.
And then most of these, if not all of them, have a two-year provision. Counsel can pivot should we want to on all of these if for some reason we weren't going to move ahead with the 2026 component. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Counsel, thoughts on this?
Just on the math and the local share, our share of that for the design is $13,000. Is that accurate? The 87, 500, 37, 37.50, and then 500? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And that's budgeted, Kevin, for 2025 for the airport fund?
I was pulling that up as you were asking the question to make sure we have a project in. Councilmember Roberts, we do have an amount in a budget for 2025. I'm just making sure that it's the one that was submitted.
So Mayor and members of the council, we do have in total projects for 2025 currently of 555,000 in the budget, which includes different projects that are the 2025 runway, 300-foot extension, taxiway runway A, a 300-foot extension, the clear zone action plan, and an apron extension as well. Other projects that are in the 2025 CIP.
I think I heard all of these, right? So these were all anticipated as part of that budget? I don't have any concern supporting this tonight. I think there's a broader conversation, you know, as we're making these airport projects, we need to make sure that we're continuing to keep an eye on fund balance and there's a lot of moving pieces there. But to me, these are, you know, quarter runway planning type projects that give us better information on what that future project might look like. I'm happy to support this tonight, open to any other discussion others may have.
I'm fine with sponsoring it or supporting it. I do think though, especially on the actual construction part of it, as we get more transparent on what that budget, the airport fund really looks like and where those dollars are coming from and going, we'll have some hard decisions to make to actually do the project with the funds that may or may not be there.
Yeah, agree. And we're ready for a motion this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve the Mindot State FY 2025 Airport Grant Offers for the runway 300-foot extension, taxiway extension, and the runway clear zone acquisition plan.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Motion carries. Thank you for being here tonight, Silas.
Thank you.
Counsel, next for your consideration is item 7B, reconsideration of ordinance 740, the Parks and Recreation Commission Ordinance. And this is an item that was tabled from a previous meeting. Abby, if you want to, maybe because this was tabled from the previous meeting, we had a fair amount of discussion and some topics. If you just want to give an update maybe to start, that would be good. Thank you.
So just the quick background, in January of last year, the council approved ordinance number 721, which repealed the former Parks, Lakes, Trails Commission and enacted a new Parks and Recreation Commission. And the ordinance outlined roles and responsibilities of the commission and also staff. We knew that there were some edits that needed to be made to that ordinance. And in light of you approving, moving the Parks Division into wholly into Public Works, we brought forth an amended ordinance. At your last regularly scheduled meeting, you heard public testimony from FLA's Vice President, Myron Pults. Mr. Pults was concerned about the partnership that the city has with FLA and their lack of ability to vote as a member of the commission. At the meeting, you did hear us discuss just the concerns that we have in securing a voting member from both FLA and the school district and how we really do appreciate these partnerships. We can't do it in our park system without these partners. And we believe them in an advisory role would actually still continue to bring them to the table, but wouldn't run amok in the areas that they might not be able to vote on, including agreements, youth athletics, those sorts of things. So since that time, we have reached out to both agencies, both partner organizations who understand the role that they would place if they were a voting member, some of the restrictions, and are supportive of that advisory capacity. They also recognize that they don't always have to have a representative at the meetings, but that they appreciate the partnership and be able to be involved. So tonight before you is consideration of ordinance number 740 that would modify the Park and Recreation Ordinance, removing the staff duties, changing a little bit of the duties of the commission. Aside from some publishing costs, there's no costs involved with this. You can move to approve, amend. I do want to note, there's two actions if you do move to approve, which staff would recommend would be ordinance number 740. There would also be a subsequent motion to approve resolution 08262402. And that's the resolution authorizing the summary publication of ordinance 740. Do you have any questions for me?
No questions. Thank you for taking, having the follow-up communication with both organizations just to make sure we are clear. Counsel, any questions or follow-up items on this topic? We had a fair amount of discussion in previous meetings as the weather hits outside.
Were you looking for a motion already or?
Well, I was, I mean, maybe before we jump into motion, I just, you know, we've had a lot of conversation about this topic. I think we just need to continue to reiterate. The goal of this is to streamline operations and communications and to make that simpler. Us previously having both a FLA advisory member, a Fenway advisory. Um, us previously having both a FLOWZ advisory member, a Fenway advisory board, and a Parks, Lakes, and Trails Commission, meant that there were three different groups, kind of all circling on the same topic and not always connecting. Um, the goal of this is to bring those groups together as part of the, um, Park Commission, um, and really streamline communication. I appreciate also that a lot of time has passed since we've con- considered, um, this model. And so us, um, you know, actually implementing this, seating that park board, getting to work is important. And so I'm happy to support this this evening. Um, I think this is better, a better model, and I really appreciate the partnership of the school district and FLOWZ in willing to serve, um, in an advisory role. I think it's, it's, um, a nice move forward. Um, with that, I'm ready for a motion, if anyone's ready?
Okay, I'd make a motion that, for the first motion, uh, they move to approve the ordinance number seven forty, and ordinance amending Title III, Chapter thirty-one, Section thirty-one point seven-five, related to the Parks and Recreation Commission, as presented. And we'll, well, yeah, we'll make a separate motion for the next part, so.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
First motion, and then second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion's carried, and second motion?
Move to approve the resolution, um, zero-eight dash two-six dash two-four dash zero-two, a resolution authorizing the summary publication of ordinance number seven four-zero, and ordinance amending Title III, Chapter thirty-one, Section thirty-one point seven-five, related to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Uh, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on this one?
Mayor Bean, if I might just add, um, it, the resolution didn't make it into the packet, there was a table setting it in there that I forgot to mention. I didn't catch if the motion was for a resolution oh-eight-two-six-two-four-oh-two. Okay, great, sorry. Thank you. Trying to be.
That's what I said.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for confirming. Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion's approved. Okay, moving to our third item, seven C, and consideration of the Crockett land donation, Abby.
Sure, Bart Palmer Crockett owns three parcels of property in Forest Lake, and wishes to donate them to the city without compensation. Um, Mr. Crockett approached the city earlier this year, uh, to see if the city had interest in obtaining three parcels of land. Um, they largely encompassed by wetland, and were unable to be built upon by the landowner, and were of no value to him. In discussions with the landowner, the watershed district, and the city, it's determined that there is a public purpose for the, for all three properties, so that's wetland preservation and future stormwater management. Discussion with the Comfort Lake, Forest Lake Watershed District, they are also interested in the parcels, but the timeline just really didn't work out for their acquisition. It's determined that in addition to that wetland preservation and stormwater management, these are public needs of the city in the future. So there is no cost associated with this, other than we have agreed to pay the second half of taxes for the parcels. The total costs for this and the closing cost is twenty-five-hundred bucks. Um, it's a very small fee, especially in comparison, a nominal amount, especially in comparison to, uh, land acquisition costs, if we need to do a project later for stormwater purposes. So, um, you have options tonight, approve the resolution, amended, approve it, uh, don't accept the donations. But it would be staff's recommendation that you move to approve resolution oh-eight-two-six-two-four-oh-one, a resolution authorizing the donation of real property from Bart Palmer Crockett with gratitude.
Thank you, Abby. Council, consideration, any questions on the item this evening? As I look at this, because there is a identified public purpose, this seems, um, generous, and something that, I, I'm not seeing any reasons why not, but open to any discussion or other perspectives?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number zero-eight-two-six-two-four-oh-one, a resolution authorizing the donation of real property to the city by Bart Palmer Crockett, pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Section four-six-five dot zero-three.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second with gratitude.
Very good, thank you. Motion and second with gratitude, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. Very good. Um, last item on our, um, regular agenda this evening is consideration of an airport commission, um, member, and, um, I received positive word from, um, our current airport commission chair of an interview that was held between our airport commission chair and our airport commission liaison, Councilmember Husnick. Um, uh, overwhelming, um, positive feedback, and the recommendation is to approve, um, Joe Gall, Gallmeyer to the airport commission. And with that, I would, um, um, move that council appoint, um, Joe Gallmeyer to the airport commission in our vacant seat. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second, any discussion? Follow-up, hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. Thank you so much. Um, Jolene, um, we can talk about onboarding, onboarding process as we do a new member. It's been a while since we've had a, a new, um, a, a new member to a, a commission, but we can talk about what onboarding looks like. Very good. All right, that is the end of our planned agenda this evening. We can move into, um, staff updates, and we'll start with Jolene.
No updates this evening.
Let's just go around the table here. Abby?
Uh, just a couple tomorrow night's, last night of Arts in the Park for the season. Uh, Rock in Hollywood's will be there, as well as our community corn feed. We also will have the Veterans Memorial Committee showcasing the Veterans Memorial, and soliciting some public feedback about the memorial, and a new center design sculpture. They are, uh, going to come before the council with that design in Oc- October, but really wanted to kind of solicit some feedback based on this council's request, uh, the last time you were here, so. Stop on down if you want to see that new design and get a bite of corn.
Thank you, Abby. Dave?
No updates tonight.
Chief Newman?
Mayor and council, just, uh, be advised, we just went into a severe weather warning, uh, thirty seconds ago. I haven't read the whole warning to see what it is for winds, but obviously it got windy there a little bit ago. Uh, the only other update I have is the joint fire board meeting for Thursday has been canceled, and the next joint fire board meeting will be on nine-twenty-six.
So we have not heard from the SAFER grant yet, is that correct?
Uh, they've, they started releasing August first, and as of, uh, today, no Minnesota, uh, fire departments or any, uh, SAFER grants were awarded to Minnesota organizations. So we still have another month for release, but, um, as of today, nobody in Minnesota has received one yet. That's all I have.
Heard that update, very good. Uh, Amanda?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, council, uh, so at the last meeting, I believe, was when I gave the cannabis, um, one-on-one. And I have a couple changes since then, so I want to check in with council. Uh, since then, the Office of Cannabis Management has issued new guidance. Um, that changes some of what I had told you at the last meeting. Um, two, uh, two specific items. One is, uh, initially, they had said that you were going to, if you wanted to cap, which I know that council had not expressed a cond- uh, desire to do so, but if you wanted to cap the retail businesses, um, you had to sort of meet the next threshold of twenty-five thousand. That is no longer the case. So if you have twelve-thousand-five-hundred-and-one, uh, residents in the city, you would need to allow at least two rental licenses. That doesn't really change a whole lot for what you have directed staff so far, but wanted to let you know that that is a change. Uh, secondarily, um, and I, this may impact a decision for council, the, um, the inspections that they were requiring the city to do, there was two different types of inspections. So those were the sort of underage person who goes in, you know, with the police and attempts to purchase. Uh, but then they were also requiring an annual inspection that was going to include assessing the product and confirming that it met all of the requirements related to that, as well as following age require, you know, checking their age verification system. Um, that has changed to only requiring us to check the age verification system. So the annual second check that is required is dramatically easier, frankly. It just requires less education and, and la- less things to do. Um, and so that was something that council had, um, that had been advised by staff to potentially kick the registration up to the county level because of that, um, because of, of that inspection. Based on that, right now, at this point, staff has changed their minds, and we would recommend that we keep the registration at the city level, um, because that does allow us to receive ten percent of the ten percent tax. So all these products are going to be taxed a flat ten percent. Ten percent of that ten percent tax, essentially one percent, um, is a local share, and so that would come to the city instead of the county. Based on the intensity of these inspections, we think that that's something that the, the police department can manage, unless council wants to direct us differently.
If the, um, the product inspection, product quality component of that check has shifted off of the city, where has that gone?
Great question, unknown. Uh, so my understanding is that, that's something that potentially the state may at some point pick up in a, in a fashion, how that looks and what that is going to be is, is not currently in my purview.
Okay.
But I see a lot of head nodding, so when we come back with the ordinance at this point, the intention is we are not going to pursue a conversation with the county anymore about registration at the county level, we will plan on keeping that, and that will be incorporated into future ordinances that will come before you this fall.
I would say, unless something else changes, right? Should something else change that makes that far more complicated?
I will update you in two weeks with potentially yet another update. And in fact, probably here in the next couple of weeks, there will be some updates around what's happened with their pre-licenses and some things like that. So if there's something of interest, I will make sure to bring it to your table.
Thank you.
That's, that's all.
Ryan, staff updates?
Mayor City Council, nothing spec- specific to update tonight. Uh, you know, the public infrastructure projects are fine with this type of weather. Obviously, private projects that are going on right now, that still have exposed dirt, and still in the process of excavating or grading, are struggling to meet schedules, and will be lingering quite, uh, longer this year, and so that's all I really have to update at this time.
Kevin?
No updates.
All right, spring back for council updates, let's just go right down the line. Councilmember Husnick, no, no update, Councilmember Valento?
No updates for me.
Councilmember Roberts?
Nothing this evening.
Um, just quick, just a quick, um, reminder that Abby passed along, hope to see everybody tomorrow evening at the final Arts of the Park, and, um, the community corn feed, and thanks to all of our staff and volunteers that make that such a terrific event. Oops. Forward to seeing everyone tomorrow night on a weather night, hopefully very different than this evening. And, um, be safe driving home, maybe it's a day to hang here for a little bit while this eases up, so. Um, that is the end of our planned agenda this evening, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.